Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for April 1st, 2008. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Yusefian.
Here.
Aaron Nigeryan.
Here.
Mr. Kusakian, would you read item 3 first?
Before I read the report?
Report.
Thanks. The agenda for the April 1st, 2008 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, March 27, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. This is a special meeting, and at 3:00 A. we have a city attorney regarding discussion of request for support, the Korean American fees trade agreement, Corus FTA. 3:00 is a resolution urging congressional support.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, we were, this is on the agenda to discuss this resolution for a free trade agreement with Korea and the United States. Mr. Weaver, as you can tell, is absent. He is currently at the hospital where his daughter is in the process of giving birth, and it has been suggested that he would appreciate a continuance of this matter until next week. I know that there may be some of you in the audience wishing to speak to this item. I would pending a motion to continue, and a second, I would apologize for your time and efforts in attending this meeting, but we will certainly have full discussion of this very interesting international relations and international economic implications of this agreement and treaty next week.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Draymond.
I would move that we continue this.
Second. Is there anyone who wishes to address the continuance only, not the merits or the pros and cons of the free trade agreement itself? Being done, roll call, please.
Well, there is none. There's two hands.
Okay. So I wasn't sure if your cards were intended to this.
This is about while the speakers are coming up, you want this matter continued to the special, to a special meeting at 2:30 next week or 6 o'clock?
There may be someone who'd like to address that from the audience, so I'll be happy to hear the speakers, and then we can modify the motion to specify the time. Nancy Kent, we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you. I am fine with having a continuance, and I was just going to request that it be at the regular 6 o'clock meeting rather than the 2:30 time. And the continuance would allow people interested in this to write letters to the editor about it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Barry Allen with Van Guardians. I don't see any need for a continuance because it is my understanding from reading the staff report that this was requested by the mayor, Mayor Nigeryan, to have it on the agenda. I didn't see any other requests in the last few weeks or since January to have it put on the agenda, so that must have been at some point at maybe a Brown Act violation. I don't think it should be continued. I think that you should have that meeting right now. Mr. Draymond, you're looking at it. Did you request it to be on the agenda? Did you vote on it? Or it was just the mayor's decision? I think that the public deserves better. We have some very pressing things in this city. We spent $196 million more than we took in in the last six years. I think we have the budget issues that really require the city's time and this body's time. I think we have an issue that's been waiting for three years regarding candlesticks, and now it's been put off again and again and again. There are a number of things. The fire department issue. We finally had a study session after six months from the beginning of Mr. Phil Pot. So I think that with, let's get this over with. Let's put it on the, take care of it right now instead of having a continuance. Let the public hear what you want to say, and we can address it as to the merits of the Korean Free Trade Agreement. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Mr. Draymond.
I don't have a question, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Allen. I think this is about the second time that you've asked me or brought my name up simply because you interpret from the look of my face that I'm making a commentary. I'm sorry you're that sensitive. Without my glasses, I don't see the clock well. I don't have distance glasses with me. What you saw me doing was looking at the clock, sir.
Thank you. And I would just like to, I would like to respond to Mr. Allen that I can assure him that no Brown Act violation occurred, that this is not a matter of just getting over with such as taking a spoon of castor oil. This is something that I believe that all the council should be able to give their opinions for or against, as well as including members of the public involved in that debate. In no way does our consideration of this item preclude or force out any other of the pressing items that are before the city. We will find time for everything. Therefore, with a motion and a sec, would anyone like to, the maker of the motion, Mr. Draymond, we do have a request to make it at 6 o'clock. May I inquire as to Mr. Starbird or Mr. Howard, what does 6 o'clock look like next week?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the 8 o'clock agenda for 6 is very light next week. It's the changeover in mayor. Oh, that's right. That's why the agenda is very light, because it is the city council's reorganization that evening. So, again, from an agenda standpoint, very light business agenda. We kept it that way intentionally because it is the reorganization night.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, in view of the fact it's the reorganization, either we do it the week after or let's do it in the afternoon.
Okay. Any thoughts on the?
I don't have a preference, Mr. Mayor. I prefer to try to put these things in the evening so there is greater access for the public to speak if they wish. My desire for asking to continue it is simply related to professional courtesy, one that I would expect my colleagues would give me the same courtesy if there are an issue, regardless of whether I was the maker of the motion. If I were known to have a specific opinion on it one way or the other, I would expect that my colleagues would offer that professional courtesy to me too, to be allowed to weigh in. So I have no preference, though, as to time.
Mr. Yusefian, do you have an opinion on 2:30 or 6?
Considering the fact it's on the 8, I think we should do it at 2:30.
I'll just point out, so you know, that you have the CDBG Committee's recommendations coming to you next week.
Then let's do it the following week.
Okay. So the motion would be, Mr. Draymond.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
I'll withdraw my second.
And I will.
Make her want to amend the motion?
Yes. I would amend the motion to continue this to the 50, April 5th, tax day. How's that?
At?
At 8 o'clock. I mean, at 6 o'clock. Excuse me.
That's the motion, sir.
Are you forgiving all the taxes?
I'm not forgiving the taxes. I leave that to.
You send the bills to you?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Send the bills to him.
Let's take roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yusefian.
I.
Aaron Nigeryan. Yes. Thank you. Let's go to item, and again, I apologize to anyone that did come expecting to discuss this interesting bit of treaty. Next item, please.
Item 2 is Glendale Airport Authority Commissioners Regarding Overview of Part 161 Study. Report only.
Commissioner Lieutenant Povlavitis. President Povlavitis.
Commissioner Wirths. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We are here today, Commissioner Starbird, myself, and a number of people with the airport staff, to basically provide you with a briefing on the Part 161 process where we have been for a long period of time working towards seeking a curfew from 10:00 p.m. to 6:59 p.m., or I'm sorry, to 6:59 a.m. As I said, it has been an extremely long process and a very expensive process. We've invested about $6 million in the process, but we are truly in uncharted territory as we move forward with what we're asking for, what we ultimately aim to seek is a full curfew on all nighttime operations at the airport. Nobody in the country has ever done this before. So there have been some starts, some stops, some seeking advice from the FAA, some responses to seeking advice from the FAA, but ultimately, we believe that we have met the standard set forth under the federal regulations and that we can move it forward, and we have just opened the 45-day comment period on that. To that end, ultimately, this is in accordance with council's direction set some years ago that we move forward on the curfew process and the one Part 161 study, and that we would try to achieve that if that was at all possible. We believe we have met that standard. We're here to brief you, or the staff's here to brief you on the process and where we are and how we can move forward together. With us today will be Dan Feger, the interim executive director, Mark Hardy-Martin Cooper, and Tom Ryan. With that, I'll let them begin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of Glendale City Council. It is with a great deal of pleasure that staff comes here today to you to tell you that with a sense of relief that the Airport Authority has completed its Part 161 study. The completion of the Part 161 study is a big first step that hopefully will lead us to, and if I could have the next line?
Yes.
will lead us to the achievement of the authority's longstanding commitment to the members of the communities that live and work around the airport. Nope, went too far. It's to provide meaningful and significant nighttime noise relief. This is an objective that has been expressed to this Airport Authority over many years. There we go. That's our goal. The community has asked for it for many years. They have told us that the most significant noise problem emanating from the Bob Hope Airport is nighttime noise, and the Airport Authority embarked, if you could give me the next line, embarked on a program starting back in 2000 and have invested over $6 million in what's known as a Part 161 study, which is the first step that the authority must take in order to implement mandatory access restrictions at the airport. As President Povlavitis told you, the objective of this study was to study the benefits, costs, and impacts of imposing a full nighttime curfew at the Bob Hope Airport on all aircraft arrivals and departures. And it is the authority's belief that imposition of this curfew is the most cost-effective way to significantly reduce or eliminate nighttime noise. I'd like to turn to Mark Hardy-Martin, who is our Director of Noise and Environmental Programs, to take you through the details of what it means to complete a Part 161 study and to file an application seeking FAA approval of the implementation of a full curfew.
Thank you, Dan. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Work out the bugs here. As we have reported, the Part 161 study is now complete, and at its meeting on Monday, March 17, the Airport Authority accepted that study and directed staff to take the necessary procedural steps outlined in FAR Part 161 regulations for the Airport Authority to be able to submit to the FAA an application for a full mandatory curfew from 10:00 p.m. to 6:59 a.m. on all aircraft. Before I get into the details of the regulation, I'd like to take you through a very brief synopsis of some of the history of what has happened that has brought us to this point today. The Airport Authority started its Part 161 efforts in the year 2000 when it hired the firm of Landrum &amp; Brown to begin the preparation of an initial Part 161 study. The consultant had a draft application prepared in April, I believe, of the year 2003. Since, as it's been described to you today, this is a first-of-a-kind restriction on stage three operations. We submitted that as a draft study to the FAA for them to validate, if you would, the methodology that had been used in the cost-benefit analysis. Unfortunately, by 2004, the FAA had responded back to us, rejecting a number of the key elements built into the benefit-cost analysis. In 2005, the authority suggested a strategy to the city of Burbank that we sleep legislative changes to the Part 161 process itself. However, in November of 2005, the city of Burbank wrote back strongly urging that the Airport Authority pursue a full mandatory curfew through the Part 161 study, as was passed by Congress as part of ANCA. And by 2006, I believe it was May or June of 2006, the commission had retained the firm of Jacobs Consultancy to complete that study. Whether or not you are providing one alternative to the FAA for consideration or a slate of restrictions ordered in your preference, the Part 161 regulations require that you study a number of alternatives. As Jacobs began their work, they focused on the three alternatives that have been identified by Landrum &amp; Brown. For review, those are the full nighttime curfew with two lesser restrictions, a departure curfew, and a noise-based curfew. As part of the regulation or the proposed regulation, there are penalties for violations. These are tied to the existing Rule 9 violations for noise violations at the airport presently that a first violation is $3,671. Each subsequent violation up to the fourth escalates by 100 percent, the fourth violation carrying with it a mandatory ban from the airport by that operator for one year. There are exceptions built into the proposed regulation. Police, fire, military, and operations for medical emergencies are exempted, as are aircraft that are operating with a declared in-flight emergency. The regulation, the proposed regulation, has built into it a one-hour shoulder or grace period, if you would, from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., provided that aircraft are delayed by weather, mechanical, or air traffic control delays, and the Airport Authority does reserve the right to require the operator to provide proof of that delay. As Jacobs began their work, the key elements of the scope of their efforts were built around updating the current noise exposure contours, forecast activity for the years 2015 and the contours associated with and without curfew restrictions, forecast benefit and cost of the curfew, and all the time keeping within six statutory requirements that Part 161 builds into it. We'll speak more about those a little bit later in our presentation. However, it was part of the consultant's work to be able to make sure that the restriction that they were proposing met those six statutory conditions. Part of the work that I outlined just a moment ago on the previous slide talked about forecast activity, and I'd like to spend just a moment or two speaking about what Jacobs determined in their forecast. In 2005, the airport had 2.8 million annual passengers going through the facility. Jacobs forecasted that by the year 2015, there would be a 2.8 percent average annual increase over that period of time, and that by 2015, there would be 3.6 million average annual inplanements at the airport, or 7.2 million passengers coming and going. Passenger air carrier operations were also projected to increase, however, by not quite the same percentage, simply due to the fact that air carriers using smaller aircraft or aircraft with smaller seating configurations would be swapped out for aircraft with larger carrying capacities. You may be familiar with the fact that the airport has a number of its flights right now with the Canada Air Regional Jet, which is a 70-seat aircraft that could easily be changed to a 737 and be completely infitting with the typical aircraft that serves the Bob Hope Airport. Total aircraft operations will increase in that period from 136,000 to 146,000. However, that is made up of a number of gainers and losers amongst the subcomponents of what makes up total aircraft operations. As indicated on the slide, air carrier operations are expected to grow by 2 percent. There is a projected 4.4 percent increase in corporate general aviation flying. However, light general aviation is predicted to continue a rather marked steep decline, 12 percent per year. Benefit-cost analysis is part of, an integral part of Condition 2, which we'll speak more about in a moment. However, it serves a dual purpose, and that is that pervasive throughout Part 161 is the concept that expected or projected benefits must exceed projected costs. And as staff and Jacobs took a look at some of the previous efforts, including those that had been proposed by Landrum, this is where we took a real close look at some of those efforts and have suggested and built into the cost-benefit analysis that is before, that is an integral part of this study, the fact that FAA policy allows for home sound insulation to go beyond the boundary of the 65 CNEL contour. As you'll recall and may be familiar with the fact that one of the reasons why FAA objected to earlier studies was that benefits were attributed to outside what is known as the 65 CNEL contour, and that is community noise exposure level. However, existing FAA policy does allow for home sound insulation programs to go beyond the 65 CNEL if you are attempting to maintain neighborhood equity. In other words, you don't insulate part of the houses on one block, you continue out to the end of the block. And so for a very limited ability, an airport proprietor has the ability to go outside the 65 CNEL under existing FAA policy. For reference, that comes from the FAA AIP handbook, and I have projected on the screen there the exact reference. The key portions right there would be in the third and fourth lines where it's additional number of otherwise ineligible parcels contiguous to the project area, if necessary to achieve equity in the neighborhood, can be added to that project. Illustrated what that means is the contours that you have in front of you right now. Let me take a moment just to explain. The green solid line is the airport's current 65 CNEL contour. The dashed green line is the authorized home sound insulation work area where we provide insulation services to homeowners in those neighborhoods. The red solid line is the 2015 forecast with no restrictions at the airport, and the dashed red line beyond that is what would the work area be if the 2015 forecast came to pass. When computing the benefits of the study, in other words, the savings to the FAA or and the airport if a curfew were enacted, what really needed to be calculated were the difference between, would be the difference between our current work area, the dashed green line, and the dashed red line. Unfortunately, previous efforts had so focused on the fact that FAA had been critical of going outside the 65 CNEL area that they stopped at the actual red solid line and didn't include the number of properties that are picked up in the area when you go to the red dashed line, which would be the authorized work area. On the screen in front of you now is a very simplified summary of the classic benefit-cost calculation, and there you would see that monetary benefits of $67 million in net present value dollars is made up of two principal factors, approximately $7 million in home value appreciation if a curfew were enacted, and roughly $59 to $60 million worth of home sound insulation that would not need to be performed if a curfew were enacted, and the contour shrank accordingly. Monetary costs of $55 million, leaving you with a net benefits of $11,780 and a positive benefit-to-cost ratio of 1.21 to 1. At this point in the presentation, I would like to ask Tom Ryan to come forward and walk the City Council through a brief restatement of the six statutory conditions contained in the regulation and how the authority feels that this regulation meets that.
I'm counsel for the authority, and the key part of my part of the presentation is to make clear there's an understanding that while the cost-benefit ratio for the first time in six years appears to give us a positive chance of FAA approval, it does not guarantee success. Simply put, there's six statutory conditions that we're going to have to convince the FAA that we meet. Those conditions are as follows. Reasonable, non-arbitrary, nondiscriminatory. Really, this almost predates ANCA. This has been federal law for 40 years. Reasonable means that you actually identify a problem and that it exists. Non-arbitrary is that your mechanism to deal with the problem is actually tied to the problem, i.e. if the problem is nighttime noise, it's not a matter of fixing trucks, nighttime aircraft noise. It has to be tied to the operations that are actually causing the noise. Third, nondiscriminatory. If you're going to treat A a certain way, B, if it's the same class of operations, has to be treated the same way. We believe that we survive this statutory condition. We also believe that this is the statutory condition that the FAA, if it wishes to try to stop us, will focus on. Second, does not create an undue burden of interstate or foreign commerce. This is very close to the last condition. This, though, is really directed towards the economics as opposed to the operations, which is condition number six. The economics is largely the BCA, and here at the BCA, we believe that not only does a departure curfew and a noise base work, but a full curfew will work. The other things that we have to show in this statutory condition is that the operations that are going to be denied access to our airport at this time can either be done at a different time of day or there's another facility that can accept them. In particular, from a safety point of view, we need to have a place that the planes can land. Third part, maintain safe and efficient use of navigable airspace. This is really the safety issue being drawn out into a new statutory condition. We believe that we've shown in our study that, given the limited number of flights impacted at this time of day, and in reality, the impacted flights are overwhelmingly cargo, those cargo operations and package operations can be handled either at Ontario or LAX with the GA operations largely going to Van Nuys. Does not conflict with federal law. That sounds broader than what it actually is. Does not conflict with federal law. What that really goes to is, first of all, grant assurances. Every federal airport, every airport accepting federal funds in this country has to agree to a checklist of 39 assurances. Quite simply, we have to go through each of the 39 things that we promised the federal government we would do with their money and make sure we did not violate it by closing the airport to these types of operations this hour. We think we meant that. The second thing is called exclusive rights. Exclusive rights basically means that if you get federal funds, you can't favor A over B. In other words, if United Airlines can't fly, Southwest can't fly at that time. Because of the way our restriction is written, we play no favorites. The only favorites that are played is, to a degree, government aircraft, which we have to exempt out for certain military operations, and that's recognized in the law. The third part of federal law goes back to what I said earlier, the reasonable, non-arbitrary, nondiscriminatory. What we've tried to do is tailor our restriction to a restriction that was successful pre-ANCA back in New York impacting nighttime curfew operations of helicopter operations in the New York area. It was found that a restriction that reduced the noise level by 44 percent was a reasonable non-arbitrary curfew. Not surprisingly, our reduction in our 65 CNEL contour is about 46 percent with the full curfew. Developed through a process that afforded adequate opportunity for public comment, the Airport Authority has gone above and beyond the public comment required by federal regulations. We're having a number of workshops. We're soliciting comments. We are making everything available to the public on web and through a public outreach and an in-reach program. Last, does not create an undue burden on national aviation system. Just as I said that earlier, navigable airspace, that really deals with the TRACON system of Southern California, flights coming into our area and how Palmdale directs them. The last one is really a matter of how do we impact flights leaving Atlanta, Florida, New York as they head west during the day for the turnaround and to head back east the following morning? What type of bottlenecks are we creating or not creating? Due to the aircraft operation flow into Southern California, we think we meet that standard. And one of the ways that we are trying to press our point home is in Southern California, there's a number of nighttime operational restrictions in San Diego, John Wayne, Long Beach. None of them are precisely the restriction we are proposing at the Burbank Airport, but they are restrictions that, when taken as a whole, different parts of what we're asking for, the federal government has already allowed elsewhere. And if it's good enough for them, it should be good enough for us. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Can you tell us what kind of things that those other
Can you tell us what kind of things that those other airports, John Wayne and San Diego, have implemented?
Mostly commercial curfews, as opposed to GA. Airports, at least our airport, really has three main types of users. There's the carriers, Southwest, United, American. There's what's called GA, or general aviation. Many of them are much smaller planes, but really the ones that make noise are called corporate craft. They would be the ones used by Disney, Warner Brothers, large private planes. And the last, we call cargo, even though parts of cargo with smaller package carriers are too big cargo, are UPS and FedEx. Most of the restrictions go to air carrier operations in Southern California. We already have a voluntary curfew that largely takes out our air carriers at night. Most of our nighttime noise really is a cargo derived. And I think that's all I should say at this point.
I have a question. So what would happen if there are delays due to weather for planes that are coming into Burbank and don't meet the 10 o'clock curfew? What would they have to do? Go to another airport?
Well, there is exceptions built in for weather delays up to a certain time period. They can always land at our airport and then prove up that they meet one of the exceptions. If they don't meet the exception, they would be fined, and it would, the count would start against them as to what they can do in a rolling 12-month period. It's our expectation that largely weather concerns will cause them to either move their schedule up to build in a cushion, or they'll redirect certain flights. But from a planning point of view, where there's other restrictions elsewhere in the country, the airlines are pretty good to adjusting to the reality of restrictions at airports.
Who makes that determination of a violation? Is that the Airport Commission itself?
In the first instance...
Let's say a weather issue or an emergency issue. And they would prove up, to whom do they prove up? And is there a appeal process after the initial determination?
Historically, we, under our airport rules, in the first instance, it is staff, airport staff, that contacts the operator, tells them that our, I mean, it's an electronic system. We know when planes land and what the noise levels are of those operations. We would tell them that there has been an apparent violation. They have a certain amount of time to challenge that and explain. If they try to explain, staff at the first instance reviews that and contacts them about whether or not, yes, this appears to be a legitimate exception or not. Historically, we have not had the FAA approve our enforcement mechanism yet, but under our existing noise rules, they have the ability to try to go to one of our committees to challenge if they believe staff has been inappropriate in Rule 9, fine, under our existing noise rules. Ultimately, the commission would have to take action pursuant to a resolution if the FAA approves our enforcement mechanism. And we have a draft resolution that the FAA will be able to go over before they approve this, and they'll either approve our enforcement mechanism, or they'll strike or blue pencil it.
Mr. Yusefian.
There's currently a voluntary curfew in effect, and there are people who violate that there is a fine. Could you tell us what the fine amount is?
The voluntary curfew, we don't necessarily fine carriers for that. We do have other operational restrictions that there are fines, and the numbers that we used to safe harbor the number to keep the FAA from challenging it, we're using the same numbers. So the numbers we have under our current Rule 9 are the numbers we're going to use under our proposed Rule 13. Sorry about the number, but that's what we were up to. So our curfew would be Airport Noise Rule 13.
Are you guys more confused now?
Can you give me a historical perspective? What was the genesis of this? Was this an outcry of the residents in the immediate surrounding areas? Is that what?
I'm not trying to be smart, sir, but how much time do you have? Originally, in 1972, the city of Burbank enacted an ordinance to try to put a curfew on the books. It went to the Supreme Court twice. It was ultimately struck down in the city of Burbank in their challenge to Lockheed, lost that case, and federal law was established that an airport proprietor, that a non-proprietor could never put a curfew on. So we actually made law in this state nationally. After that, Congress closed the loophole because the decision said a non-proprietor, meaning a local city, could impose a curfew. Congress then said, well, hold it. Maybe an airport itself would impose a curfew, and that could have the same destabilizing effect on a national system. So they adopted something called ANCA, the Airport Noise and Capacity Act in 1990. They've set up a system that theoretically a proprietor, such as the Airport Authority, could seek federal approval. To date, nobody has achieved approval. We are now in the 18th year, so the FAA is not necessarily disposed towards granting approvals. But originally, this has been a longstanding desire of the city of Burbank and its residences, its residents, and for years, they have sought that. Over time, the Airport Authority governing commission, of which the city appoints three commissioners, have created a noise program, the centerpiece of which is an acoustical treatment program, which has put millions and millions of dollars into the community. But there was also a desire that, notwithstanding the acoustical treatment, to pursue something about nighttime noise, and that was the real genesis of actually doing a 161 study.
If the FAA were to deny your application, what remedies does the airport have? Is it federal court, then? Do you go before a district judge, or?
We have...
...of appeal in DC? What does that?
I think the safest answer for me to give is, in the first instance, under Part 16, we could challenge the FAA's decision internally with the Department of Transportation. The FAA is entrusted with tremendous discretion under federal law. Whether or not you would be successful in challenging an FAA decision in federal court is very open to potential interpretation. The FAA also has tremendous leverage over discretionary funding for the Airport Authority.
They'll get even with you if you make too much noise.
It is something that the commission would have to be cognizant of when making certain decisions.
Mr. Starber.
The question raises, I think, an answer later on in the presentation that talks about the process. You'll begin to get a sense very early on as to the FAA's reaction, early on, in the sense of this rather long process, because they'll have to deem your application complete. And that will probably be, pardon the phrase, but kind of battleground number one will be over them, deeming or getting to a point where they can deem your application to be complete. So we touch on, I think they'll touch on that process later on in the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Is there more?
There's more.
Not from me, though.
Okay. I thought we were at the end. Okay, let's move on then.
There aren't any page numbers, but I think we're through about six or seven of the 18 slides.
We're very close to finished. I opened my presentation by indicating to you that in the authority's action on March 17th, they directed staff to take the final regulatory steps spelled out in the Part 161 regulation. Briefly, those final procedural requirements are on the screen in front of you. It's to publish a 45-day comment period. That advertisement ran in Monday's Daily News. Subsequent ads will run in the Glendale News Press, the Daily News, excuse me, the Burbank Leader, and the Pasadena Star News over the next week or two. But the legal requirement was met with yesterday's advertisement in the Daily News. We need to provide provisions for public review and comment, paracategorical exclusion in accordance with National Environmental Protection Act, or NEPA, and following public comment, staff to revise the 161 study as appropriate to reflect public comment, and the authority to adopt a resolution instructing staff to submit a final application to the FAA. The timeline that staff has proposed to meet those guidelines or those milestones is that public comment was deemed open yesterday with that advertisement. April 14th, we will hold a public workshop at the Airport Authority in its conference room, known as the Sky Room, and that will take place from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We will provide a court reporter to be able to take down public comment, should members of the public so wish, to be able to provide their comment in that manner. May 12th, the authority will hold a public hearing. On May 14th, the public comment period will close, and by June 16th, the consultant will come back to the authority with public comments summarized and bring to the authority a resolution for it to submit the study to the FAA. I believe Dan Fager has a few closing comments. I would like to thank you for your time.
Mayor Nigeryan, you asked earlier, what happens if the FAA rejects this application? There's nobody in the United States, nor airport in the United States, who's ever gotten as far as we have with the submission of a Stage 3 restriction to them for approval. The FAA does not have their own policy in place on how to even review such an application. So we believe that it's going to take some considerable time for them to wrestle with this very complex issue, to develop internally amongst themselves how they even review an application, what the grounds are for determining whether or not it's a complete application, and should be sent back to us for more information, and then, once it's deemed complete, whatever that means, then how to evaluate it on its merits. It is really premature for us to even begin to discuss how do you deal with rejection. We don't even know in what form or manner it will be rejected. So we probably are going to have to sit back and wait. We will continue to work with the FAA to understand, as they develop their policy, how to respond to it, and we will certainly keep you apprised on the progress that this study is making as it works its way through the labyrinth of the FAA.
Mr. Quintero. I'm thinking in terms of degrees of rejection. Is there a possibility, for instance, that they could go with a departure curfew and not the full curfew? That's within their purview, I suppose?
I believe it's the authority's intent to submit to them for review a full curfew.
No, I...
And it's unclear whether or not they would come back and say, you know, here are the reasons why a full curfew cannot be approved. And if those reasons that came back looked like they would support some other kind of access restriction, then presumably the authority could resubmit an application, go through the process again. We're not clear what it means or how we would have to do it to study some potential alternative, or even if we could. So it's, again, because there is no precedent here at FAA, we're sort of in the dark in terms of being able to know with precision how we would go post-rejection. And we're hopeful that the FAA, and with your support, and with the support of our congressional representatives, will help us understand what the process is, because we need to know as much as they do. What is the process here? And how do we go about obtaining significant nighttime noise relief for our community? Community's been asking for it for 30 years. How do we go about doing it? If this process doesn't work, how do we do it?
Mr. Starber.
Mr. Mayor, I thought it might be useful at the commission meeting where the presentation was given, I don't recall whether it was Tom or Dan U. They gave a sense of sort of the timing for this process, and as I recall correctly, the thinking is that this issue over whether or not the FAA will deem the application complete will probably occur sometime toward the end of this calendar year. So unless the thinking's changed, I recall it was going to be sort of a December timeframe.
Our best estimate was by Christmas, we would know if we were deemed complete, and that I would think that by next summer, we would be start hearing things through the system of their response and whether or not they were going to take a blue-line approach to try to strike certain elements of the restriction, or if it would be, if it would survive review, or if it would be denied. And what makes that a little bit of uncharted territory is, we certainly expect that while there will be some who support the restriction, there are some stakeholders who clearly their business will be impacted by a restriction, and we can expect that they would try to lobby for denial of FAA approval.
Mr. Yusefian. And Mr. Starber.
I think that's pretty much what I was going to say, which is, before we get to first base, there is that intermediary base. First, we have to see if they will consider the application deemed approved. And there's a possibility of FAA coming back and saying, we don't think your application's complete. This is the list of stuff that we want you to do. And depending on what the list is, it may take you several months just to get that taken care of. And then you submit again, and if they want to pick on you, they can pick on you again and say, well, this is not what we meant. This is another thing we meant. And some of the membership of the people who actually review this thing changes all the time, and as our city attorney has said, there are times that weren't reasonable and substantial, and there's all these vague words that are there, that there's nothing out there. It's a very nebulous thing out there, trying to get your hands around. And at one point, if they say no, generally, my understanding is, they will not come back to you and say, you can't have full curfew, but we will approve a departure of curfew. You basically have to apply for a departure curfew, or any other type of a curfew. So that's, so there's a lot of conversation, and I will guarantee you, there was a lot of attorney fees that takes place, and Tom intends to put all his children through college and maybe his grandchildren through college by the time we're done.
That wasn't necessary, but true.
I think it's important to understand that if you believe that the implementation of a mandatory curfew for the benefit of your constituents is important to them, then you need to show support. You need to show strong support. You need to show that strong support to Congress, and you need to show that strong support to the FAA. Because as Tom said earlier, there are a number of entities that are affected adversely by this curfew, particularly those air cargo carriers that would not be able to operate out of Bob Hope Airport. And you can expect that they are going to make their position very well-known to Congress and the FAA. This is an uphill battle. This is not a downhill battle. There's going to be a lot of discussion here by a lot of people on the Hill about this groundbreaking effort that we're making here to impose a Stage 3 access restriction. So I can only tell you that, if you support it, you should support it strongly.
Are you being supported by other airports nationwide in your efforts? I presume that that's how it would line up, FedEx, UPS, versus, you know, the airport operators?
I think other airports are going to stand by and watch us take the bloodbath. I do not think we will see airports lining up behind Bob Hope Airport to go marching hand in hand with us to Washington, asking for implementation of this curfew. They're going to stand back and see how the FAA develops a policy, and see what they can get out of this process. I think it's up to us to carry that message.
Thank you. Mr. Starber.
Maybe for Tom, is there any obligation during the 45-day comment period for parties who want to take issue with the Part 161 to do so during the 45-day period?
It's not the same as NEPA, where if you don't speak, you ever have to be silent. I expect them to speak, though, because they will want to give the FAA substantial evidence to back the FAA's decision, but what I would say is that they will not limit themselves to that avenue of attack. They have a very strong lobby, and I would expect that...
Will they have more than one bite at the apple?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, this was a receive and file.
Well, we would anticipate, Mr. Mayor, we didn't include a motion or resolution of support, but we would anticipate some sense from the council to bring you back a resolution of support within the 45-day comment period.
I'd move that motion.
There's no need for a motion. We just need to get a sense of the council.
Bring it on. Mr. Yusefian.
One question from Tom. One point, we were working out some of the economics of it, the numbers. We were unable to kind of go for the full curfew because it was not ending up on the positive. How did you get it to the positive end?
What happened, Your Honor? Your Honor, I've been in court too much this week, and I'm going to be there tomorrow. The way we went beyond the 65 is the AIP eligibility area for soundproofing. The FAA's own document allows you to go outside 65 to soundproof. So we didn't go outside the 65 for benefits in general, but since the FAA's own policy said they would spend money outside the 65 to finish off blocks, we merely added the amount of money the FAA would not have to spend under their own program if we got the restriction, and we assume that that puts the FAA in a box of how they can really say that is not a savings.
Councilman Yusefian, let me add something to that answer. As you know, from the amount of time that we spent on this, and we spent a considerable amount of time, both the consultant and staff... amount of time, both the consultant and staff, trying to find ways to live within the FAA's direction to us that they gave us in 2004, that said, stay inside the 65 CNL contour. So we looked at a lot of different ways. We looked at awakenings. We looked at different methods to try and find dollar values of imposing a curfew, but staying literally within the 65 CNL contour. As late as August of last year, we were still staying inside that 65 CNL contour, and as you know, the benefit cost ratios there were very negative. As staff and the consultant were doing their final, what I'll call, quality control check on the document as it stood at the beginning of this year, we looked at it and we said, you know what? This isn't going to work. We cannot go to the FAA with a negative benefit cost ratio. We have to think outside the box. There's got to be some way that we can make a positive benefit cost ratio work. And so we sat there looking at the roughly finished document, and we said, you know, wait a minute. The existing program, the existing home sound insulation program itself goes outside the 65 CNL contour. The light bulb went on. If the FAA is willing to and has been paying us millions of dollars to do our existing program, and they let us go outside the 65 CNL contour for that, why can't we do that for the 161 benefit cost analysis? And so when the light bulb went on, then we looked at each other and we said, you know what? We found a way. We found a way to make the benefit cost analysis positive, and we told the consultant, you better go burn midnight oil and redo your study and incorporate this, because this is the only way that we'll ever be able to take this to the FAA for approval. And so in the last couple of months, the staff and the consultants for the authority have worked almost around the clock to build in this new concept, and the results that you saw today bear out the fruit of that effort, that we now have a way to show a positive benefit cost ratio.
The only issue I have with that, and it's not that I'm against the curfew, the only issue I have with that is, what is it to keep the federal regulators from telling you or us that you have taken something out of a contact? That's not what it was meant to do, and one has nothing to do with it, and early on, we have told you, stay within your 65 CNL, and you have not stayed within your 65 CNL and just shoots us down. Are we even looking at it, that it's complete or not?
That may be the battle ahead, sir.
Oh, okay.
And we intend to fight aggressively, Councilman Yusefian, to make our point, because we believe our point is correct, and we believe it is consistent.
Okay. Thank you. So I think we have direction.
I sense a consensus will bring you back, unless there's an objection, will bring you back a resolution on a regular agenda within the 45-day time period.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak before you.
Okay, let's see. Where are we? I think that's the housing.
That's the special meeting.
Last item, do we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved.
Second. Okay, the special meeting for council is adjourned. What would you like to do?
Housing. Housing. Ready? Ready? Sure.